Commissioners Board Work Session. It is Thursday, June 9, 2022. It is 2:03 PM. This is a hybrid meeting. We're in Building 1, Room 280. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina Mejia. I'm the Chair of the Board. Vice Chair Chaya Mensah joining me via Zoom. And Commissioner Gary Edwards in the Board Room, as well as County Manager Amira Chavez, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, and Director of Public Works Jennifer Walker. We have also Tim Wilson and Angela Solstein joining us today. The topic of the agenda is the Lake Management District briefing. County Manager, do I hand it off to you?
Yes, first, thank you. Just to frame the conversation, Manager. Thank you, Commissioners. This is a follow-up to the briefing you received on May 25, 2022. So I have two items for you today. And the first item does not require a decision. I'd like to follow up on public comment that we received from Mr. Carmen related to IT costs. We have some conversation on that. And the next item that I have, I will be asking for a decision. And that will be a decision related to the Patterson Lake petition. As you may know, the next step is in the process for the Board to allow the process to continue on. So when we get to item number two, I will present the Board with a couple of options for you to consider as to move forward. But I am requesting perhaps an expectation that at the end of this meeting, a decision is made related to the petition. Related to Patterson Lake. Those are the two main elements. Any questions on that, Commissioners?
I'm ready to support it if that's what you're asking.
No, no, no. Any questions on my opening statements?
Questions? Okay.
So with that in mind, Ms. Walker?
Thank you. So there's been discussion about a process improvement that the Department moved forward with as we want to provide some detailed information about that improvement, what it was, what it is, the benefits of it, the cost for it, and the communication that went out regarding it. So I'm going to let Tim kind of go into the details of that. And you all, I should have a one-page document on it.
Thank you, Jennifer. Yes, in your briefing packets, you should have a one-page summary of the Lake Management District Assessment, Billings, Conversion Project. It kind of outlines what we've achieved by improving our system for collecting that annual assessment. And so to back up a little bit, the Lake Management District is an assessment-based revenue source, very similar to our Storm and Surface Water Utility, very similar to our Noxious Weed program. So what that means is each year, the ratepayers within that district, the parcels within that district, need to be updated, evaluated, and then forwarded on to the county assessor and county treasurer for inclusion on the next year's tax statements. So for the Storm and Surface Water Utility and for the Noxious Weed Fund, we for some time have had an efficient process for doing that work that is not resource-intensive and is not prone to mistakes. So for the Lake Management Districts, it was a different process. It was a process that was supported by the Aquatic Resource Specialists within Public Works and supported heavily by Thurston GeoData annually to work through this exercise. So we had the opportunity last year to utilize staff who came over to Public Works as part of the reorg in 2018, 2019 that manages the collection for the Storm and Surface Water Utility and had some capacity to upgrade our system and improve our system. So we looked at, in doing that, we looked at kind of the payback period for this. We are estimating that the annual cost prior to this improvement for that annual exercise was in the neighborhood of about $7,300 to do that. And this is inclusive of both the LMDs. What we are also anticipating is that the cost going forward will go from that $7,300 down to $468. So it is quite a cost savings. Based on the estimates that we received early on related to how long this effort will take, we were looking at a payback period of about two years. This was not part of the budget process. This became an available resource as the budget year went on. So in keeping with the county's strategic goal regarding financial management, we're always looking to improve those processes. So in the end, the estimate that we received, the actual hours that it took to do this work were more than the 170 hours, I believe, that were estimated to do the work. So the cost for this, where we thought it was going to be about $14,000, ended up being about $18,000. And that was distributed proportionally to the LMD funds. So it took the payback period from two years to something more than two years, like two and a half or two and three-quarters of years. We expect less mistakes. We expect very little support needed from GeoData going forward. And we expect much less staff time in order to do this. When we became aware that this would be handled through via a journal entry in March of 2022, so let me back up there. I made the assumption that the charges would apply to the funds two years later, like many of the IT costs do. We became aware in March of 2022 that these would be handled through a journal entry and applied to the funds for 2021. And an email was sent out to the Aquatic Resource Specialist, copied the lakes on March 28, making them aware that there would be a journal entry. So that is the history without going into more detail of, you know, the kind of the thought process and the questions that were asked before we move forward with the improvement.
Are we open for questions?
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Mensah, and then I'll get to Commissioner Edwards. Can I share a answer, questions?
Yeah, I'm trying to get my buttons here. Okay. Okay, so the net result is that you believe that after two and a half years-ish, this is going to save the LMDs a ton of money, but they didn't know. I'm trying to kind of summarize what I thought I heard, but they didn't know, and you didn't actually even know that this was going to be charged to them this year. You thought that this would be, there'd be more time for communication about this so that they could budget for it or something? Is that kind of what, is that a summary of what you said, Tim?
Very, very close. So to your first question, yes. The expectation is that long-term, the individual funds would save a significant amount of money, greater than $6,500 a year is the estimate. So that is the expectation. Regarding the second point, typical IT charges, and Robin, correct me if I'm wrong, typically hit the individual funds two years in the rear. So if there are IT costs applied to funds in 2020, typically those hit in 2022. So in effect, we assumed that by the time that these, the cost for this exercise hit the individual funds, they would have already realized the savings. They would have had immediate savings. And the cost benefit would have been realized before they incurred any cost, if that makes sense. And I know it's a little bit messy.
So at the time, at the time they got charged, they'd be saving. And then it'd basically be then like after four years or something, then they'd be really saving because they'd had two years of paying the current amount. Then they'd have two years of paying back the startup of the new system. And then they'd save money at that point. Okay, regardless of whether I got that right, another question is, are we stuck with charging them in two years or charging them now? Can we charge them, can we delay it by one year so they're not surprised by?
The fund has been.
The fund has already been built. It was a 2021 cost. It was apparently a closing entry that was already made. So we don't have a choice of when we charge it.
Okay, well, I'm going to let my seatmates ask questions, and then I might have others from there. I'll stop at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards?
I guess my concern is why there was never any discussion with the Lake Management Districts about this whole activity and why the Board of County Commissioners were never appraised that this was going to happen, happen. What was the, I guess justification from it, or was it just pure error?
I'm going to speak for you here, too. It was not error. It was a process improvement project. And so in terms of how we operate within Public Works, that is one of our core values, is innovation. And part of how we define innovation is process improvement, right? So what are those things that we can do to be more efficient and effective, more accurate in how we deliver our services? And so when we looked at taking a manual-type process and having it be more automated, and that means we free up, because we really never save money if we're talking about employee costs, right? We have a finite amount of hours. So that means we're spending less money on GeoData. We have more staff hours from Paula, and then in turn, more staff hours from GeoData staff to work on other things.
Okay, that doesn't satisfy me, but maybe it's an explanation that you've got. But for the life of me, I cannot understand how we would do something. They have a very limited budget at the lakes. And how we could take money away from them without ever even telling them about it? It just doesn't make sense. And I really do think that the county should not be cutting into their benefits. So basically, they broke even by us doing some funding system. Is that right? Did we kind of make this whole, we took away, and then we put money back in? Is that ended up what happened? But the lakes actually got no benefit. The administrative overhead ate it all up. I mean, it just doesn't sell, it doesn't smell good to me that you wouldn't have any discussion with anybody else. Sounds like we're CYA here. And I make no bones about it, and nobody likes to make mistakes. And I think that's what's going on. We're trying to cover for a mistake, but at the cost of the Lake Management Districts getting stuck. That's what it kind of boils down to, in my eyes.
Here's the mistake that was made. The thinking that it would be covered in two years, not recognizing that the employee that we had, it was going to be direct payment for those lake hours. That was the mistake. Had we known that, there would have been a communication. But we didn't. That was, that was the error, but.
Yeah, and certainly we can learn. And I agree, I have discussed this item to a great extent. And maybe addressing your point as to why the Board was not informed, this is an operational element within the staff. They can exercise process improvement. The Board doesn't get to the level of detail authorized as process improvements, with all due respect, unless the Board wants to get into the level of details. That's a different conversation. But I absolutely agree that it was a point in time in which the staff look at this opportunity, invest, and see that return to that investment. Because the return to that investment is going to be materialized in two and a half years from now. Yeah, and it was a misunderstanding that perhaps that investment at the beginning was going to be similar to NEIT, you know? And we talked about the two-year lag on NEIT projects, and you were familiar with that. That was the assumption. That was the assumption. But what happened is it was a direct cost. It occurred this expense. And that is probably where we made the wrong assumption.
Okay, let me just follow up on that. If everything would have went as projected, and maybe it would have come close to equaling out, but we had to go a couple of years farther to get the benefit. Even if that was going to take place, why not let the Lake Management Districts know, hey, here's the plan, folks. You're going to see something take place here, but we're going to save you money. But this no-communication strikes me as staff imposing an agenda and we don't care what the Lake Management Districts have to say. And I think that's the philosophy they're picking up from the county, including the county commission, that we're not so concerned about this issue. And I'm going to take that one step farther. You know, we've got about 40-some staff, or boards and commissions that we try to keep up on. Do we have any other boards and commissions that have written directions on the management without ever having any input coming from the Board of County Commissioners towards that? And I guess what I'm referring to is on the lakes now. There's this new water resource program or something that you folks have put together. Lakes Management people tell me they wanted to have some input, but were not able to have input. They made some comments about different things somewhere along the line. I don't know where that all fits in. But the Board of County Commissioners didn't sign a resolution or ordinance or do anything to further the authority to move that forward. And I don't know of any other boards or commissions that staff just takes it on themselves to impose these regulatory oversight issues. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe you can say, oh, yes, on this one or this one. I know we're looking at the Ag Committee right now about putting something together. And we're actually looking at a book about, do we follow OPMA issues and stuff like that? But that bothers me that none of this comes in front of this board, staff crams it down the throat of the Lake Management Districts without any input. They weren't asking for any major input.
So I'm going to have a message, but let me begin answering that question. We introduced that proposal to the Board. And the Board was introduced to that proposal. And the staff informed the Board that the expectation is not to take place right away. It will take place until the next renewal or the Lake Management District will come to play. So it never was the intent from the staff, as you may remember, that this will be taking place right away. When we introduced this concept to the Board, that was exactly what was presented to the Board. The expectation from the staff is not to take place right away.
On the two existing.
The two existing LMDs. But certainly, it will be part of the consideration for any new LMDs.
I guess it's on the website as if this is the gospel today.
Well, we, it's, yeah. So it's been, so is that a misconception?
Hey, Tim, maybe step back at the difference between boards and commissions and Lake Management Districts.
Yeah, so, thank you. So a lot of difference between boards and committees. And that is spoken to in the resolution of formation for the Lake Management Districts, for the utility advisory committees, for the boards that we manage. So we have the Noxious Weed Board, we have the Storm and Surface Water Advisory Board, all designed to do different functions and all with different levels of authority. So in the case of the LMDs, we have non-appointed advisory committees. So several things on the administrative rules and your question about, do we have other guiding documents? So we do with the Weed Board. We have rough outlines of how the Board and staff is to be managed. But again, that is a board. That is an appointed board with decision-making authority. The part of the reason why the rules were needed for the Lake Management Districts is that there were a number of identified, 10 identified areas where the county is, in our opinion, at risk.
Could you explain at risk, please?
Yes. So in having a look at the different areas where the county was at risk, and two of those were addressed through letters to the individual committees earlier this year. And if you look at the history of the LMDs, these are not new items. These flare up from time to time. There is, and I'm going to go very high level and go by the topic, and we can talk in more depth if you'd like. There is consultant or contractor interference, which has been a longstanding issue and is a real risk because we are managing the application of herbicides to a large water body.
What is the risk?
The risk is using the wrong herbicide, using the wrong rates, having applications that don't work, and spending an exorbitant amount of money. There is the risk along with that, that instead of doing weed control, we have now, in effect, polluted the lake by just adding herbicides to it.
Okay, I got to interrupt you because you're asking, or you're stating that someone is interjecting on a contract, for an example. That's what you're alleging. So you're saying these people go beat people up and say, do it this way, or we're going to beat you up? Or do they go and say, how come you're doing this? And would this work better? What, how does it take place?
Yeah, I can give you a great example. So this year, Lake Lawrence Advisory Committee member reached out directly to the herbicide producer, okay? I believe had them come out to the lake, talked through. Staff was not, staff was not informed or invited to this, which is very important. The CPRO representative came out, talked through this with community members, not with the LMD, but with community members, gave some information. That information was put forward in a way that in some way, we believe, was inaccurate. Put forward to the steering committee as the county's plan for management of the lakes. And then we had to step in at that meeting and say, hold up. This is not accurate. This, we cannot go forward.
So the county still had oversight, and this is the way we're going to do it?
No, the county did not have oversight.
How did they do it? Did they do it right? Did they, in the end, did they do it right?
We had to step up to the advisory committee at that meeting and push back hard on the fact that this was the county's plan because the county was not informed of this prior.
Well, it sounds like kind of what you guys do. You have meetings and get-togethers and discussions and don't include Lake Management District either. We're serving the public. That's what this body does. We serve the public and do the best job we can to be inclusive. And I'm rather upset about this whole process that seems, you seem to be, I have no knowledge that you aren't professional and doing everything right. But you seem to be taking marching orders, either from your immediate boss or from the county manager, that seems to hinder the overall performance of the Lake Management Districts to include like you want to do away with it. I don't know if that's your idea or somewhere farther up the chain. Something is going on here that I don't think is beneficial to the citizens of Thurston County or the lakes folk. So we, as county commissioners, will probably have to have a discussion on that at some point. But it's pretty obvious to me. But it's pretty obvious to me that we've got well-meaning citizens doing a lot of work, wanting to get the job done and for some reason the county does not want to do their part. And if they can take money out in some fashion to make it harder to do things, that seems to be the way we're going.
Commissioner Mensah.
Commissioner Mensah.
I mean, I just don't understand what this is about, Commissioner Edwards. I mean, Tim just described a situation that absolutely cannot be permitted when we're responsible for managing a contract. And like, I don't know, you know, I don't know the ins and outs of this situation, but if I have to make a motion so that we, so that potentially the board can affirm that this is not appropriate, so that you don't say that staff is doing something with some agenda. This is just basic. This is just basic to the relationship with Lake Management Districts. And I don't know, I mean, I know you live on Lake Lawrence. I don't know what it is.
No, I want to clarify something.
That that is appropriate.
I do not live on Lake Lawrence. Just want you to know that. I don't live on Lake Lawrence. Lived there many years. I don't live on Lake Lawrence. Just you know.
Okay, how far away from it do you live?
We live within the district, probably about 200 or 300 yards, I suppose.
Okay, sorry, you live 200, 300 yards from the lake?
And we have access to the lake, the same as every other citizen in Thurston County has. Every other citizen in the county goes to the public access and uses this lake. I've got the same access.
Okay, but you're part of the taxing district. So, you know, I don't know, I don't want to go there, but I'm just trying to figure out your opinion or your, your statement about this is just really off the rails from my perspective. You know, you asked for what the 10 levels of risk are. We got through number one, which seemed really kind of a no-brainer and you're attacking that. And I haven't even heard the other nine. So I just don't see, I don't feel like there's an even-handed consideration of these issues and this relationship between Lake Management Districts and county. And I haven't heard anything that gives me a cause for concern that, that our need for establishing these boundaries, I mean, we've only talked about one of 10, but on that one, I find what Tim said to be 100% appropriate. And, you know, I'm just not sure why you would ever possibly think differently.
Because I don't believe this BS CYA story about stealing $18,000 out of their account. I ain't buying it.
That's not the question you asked. You asked a question about what's the risk and we're trying to explain that.
I'm going back, the reason, you've got a lot of instances where the Lake Management people are being treated poorly by county staff and there's a history of it. That's where I'm coming from.
And it's vice versa because county staff is not being treated equally either.
I'm not buying that. I don't believe you for a heartbeat.
Well, that is your opinion.
You have, you have an agenda, sir. And your agenda is to slow down this Lake Management process. I don't know if you don't like clean water, you don't like people living in rural America since they can't enjoy something like that?
You can accuse me of having an agenda, which I don't.
Well, you do. I feel you do.
And what my mission is also that I have to stand up for county staff.
Will they do something wrong? Do you stand up for them when they do something wrong?
No, I hold them accountable.
I think they did something wrong.
Commissioners, if we cannot keep decor, I will be adjourned at this meeting.
Okay, I'll try to behave myself. Thank you.
Please.
So hopefully we can get to the second item pretty soon for you to make a decision on the petitions.
Tim, I have two questions. And my two questions are in regards to the previous practice and the new practice. I mean, if the issue here is the 18,000, is there a possibility that maybe we can refund them and then go back to the previous practice and keep it at that?
The, the money that was spent is for labor hours for an employee in the IT department.
Okay.
And so I don't know if you can do a reverse journal. Like, I don't know who's going to pay for that. I'm looking to the, to Robin.
The board certainly has the option of transferring 18,000 in general fund dollars to these two funds to pay for the cost of automation of a labor-intensive process. But, but the, and I suppose we could certainly go back to billing them as $7,000 a year instead of $500 if they'd really like to continue to pay more. But that would be irresponsible of the county to not implement an improvement that would save money, in my opinion.
If I can just add to that, if you, if you look at this as a, over a five-year period, it's, they would realize a $15,000 savings over that five-year period after, after it's been three months.
So in the long run, they'll be saving money is basically what I'm hearing. So it was just, the 18,000 was just a one-time cost to implement this?
Yes, like we do with so many automation projects.
I believe county staff has an agenda to save these Lake Management Districts money.
Okay, with that, it is 2:35. Let's move on to the Patterson Lake decision, which was the second item we're going to discuss.
Yeah, at this point, I will ask the board to make a decision. Before you, you have the Patterson Lake petition and the next step in the process will be to allow the process to continue. So you have two options that I will recommend for you, three options you have today. Obviously, you have the option not to move forward with this petition. You have the option to continue with a petition of Patterson Lake. And the third option that I'd like to introduce for your consideration is to wait until the Off-It Lake petition comes and then maybe the board will move forward on both petitions. The reason that I'm introducing the third option for you is will save some administrative costs, obviously, and also if you move forward with the petition with Patterson Lake alone, the timing may not be achievable in terms of meeting the expectations of the petitioners. I mean, we're here in mid-June and it will be unlikely they will be able to go through that process of election and all the many different public hearings that need to occur in order to meet that deadline this year. And also, you know, we need to get into the budget process as well because we need to add this revenue in that new program into the 2023 budget. So certainly you have that option presented to you. And the third option that I presented to you is more from a cost efficiency point of view to, for you to wait until the Off-It Lake petition becomes formal. I believe they're pretty close to do so. And what I, I am recommending the board not to stop the process. I don't think that's a prudent approach at this point. I believe the board should allow the process to continue, whether it's Patterson Lake alone or a combination of Off-It Lake and Patterson Lake together. So those are the three options that I'd like to present to you today. But I do would like the board to make a decision today.
I see Commissioner Mensah's hand raised and then Commissioner Edwards, if you have questions, I'll go up next to you.
I support moving Patterson Lake's petition forward as fast as possible, not waiting for Off-It Lake. They will take theirs in due course.
Commissioner Edwards?
I'm wondering where the Off-It Lake application is.
So where we understand that is, is they had a signing event within their community last weekend. So they have a petition which they've been working with our staff on to make sure it's going to meet the requirements of the RCWs. Kind of ironed that out. We've backed up, done our, done our community outreach to make sure expectations are in alignment. And the last report we heard from Off-It was that they had a successful petition signing event last weekend.
So we haven't received it.
We, but we have not received the petition.
The official petition.
That's correct.
I think you have seen a draft.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Did the draft have signatures on it? I mean, was there enough with the draft?
No, there were no signatures on the draft. We were just, they were getting our feedback on the petition itself.
Okay. I go along with Commissioner Mensah on that.
Okay, so Commissioner Mensah, do you want to make a motion to that?
Sure, I move to proceed forward with the Patterson Lake, Lake Management District election and proposal and to advance that petition on the shortest timeline that's legally permissible.
Second?
Seconded, any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Mensah.
Oh, I just say that, you know, I've had probably the most questions along the way here and I had an opportunity to discuss my concerns with the leadership that's putting the petition forward. And I heard them, they heard me, and I think I'm comfortable that, I'm comfortable moving this forward based on that conversation. I just wanted to share that with the board.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, sir.
I guess I'd just echo what Commissioner Mensah said. I also have been in communication with the group. I think they've got their act together. They're ready to go. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Mensah?
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Mejia?
Abstain.
Thank you. So will, staff will bring, I believe the next step is a resolution.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, I would be asked to adopt the resolution of formation instead of public hearing.
Yep, so I think that, that resolution, everything is ready. I believe they, so as soon as you're ready, I'll put it into the agenda, you think by the 21st?
By the 21st?
Uh huh.
Yes.
Okay.
Submitted by the 21st or for the agenda of the 21st?
For the board to take, consider taking an action on the 21st.
Are you comfortable with us not following the timeframes that have been given to us by the board?
Considering the surrogates in the motion that we got, I will accommodate that on the 21st.
Thank you.
So this will be added to the agenda on the 21st is what I'm hearing?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, with that, those were the two matters that we had to discuss. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, sir.
Because I was a bit scratchy in this meeting, I would like to point out that I do not work for staff. I work for the citizens of Thurston County and I want to make that perfectly clear. When I feel that things aren't adequately handled, that's where I'm going to be, is with the citizens of Thurston County. I don't want anybody wondering where I'm at. I'm always working for the citizens of Thurston County. Thank you.
Okay, with that, it is 2:42 PM. We are adjourned.
Thank you.